Joe, all set?
All set, sir.
Alright, so we're recording now, so call this meeting the Brown-Wolston Regional School Committee to a quarter. This meeting is being recorded. Your immediate voice may be broadcast, but due to technical issues, the meeting may not always stream live. We will make every attempt to do so and record the meeting for future hosting. The items listed on the agenda may be discussed out of order as the chair decides due to potential scheduling and timing requirements. Could everyone please stand for the leaders?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the right of the Constitution, one nation, and my God, in his name, with liberty and justice for all.
Does anyone here have a public comment?
Oh, Mike, sorry. I know we don't read emails from people, but we got an email today about an SRO.
Yeah, so I saw that, so we're gonna have that on future agenda items.
I was thinking about doing that. I just wanted to make sure, since I told her, she texted and asked if I would just...
That's a fine segue to, normally at this point we would talk about communications that got left off the agenda.
Yeah, so a couple things. Through each other, gonna take us a little out of water, wanna be careful of that. So Jen Fortune, as many of you met, is the new administrative assistant, so we've been crazy with those first few days of school. Things going really well, and I'll talk to you more about that in our report. But when I was putting the agenda together, I omitted two things. One was communications, so we'll make sure that's always a future agenda item. I own that, and also Matthew Dow, I forgot, and Al talked about that as well, too, leaving him off our agenda. So those are the two things we'll make sure I discuss later on, so I apologize for that, and make sure those are future agenda items permanently on our agenda.
Alright, as far as communications go, anything that would have been included in that, this meeting, we'll make sure it gets in there for next meeting as well. Could I have a motion, please, to accept the consent agenda?
Some of it.
Megan?
Second.
Anybody questions about that, comments? Alright, all those in favor there?
Aye.
Alright, anyone guess that? Alright, that motion passes. We have a bit of a time crunch today, because we have a hard start at 6:30, but Al, I think you wanna bring something up right away first?
Okay, so if I could go a little out of water again, with permission from the chair of the school committee, I'd like to acknowledge Julie Lee, our athletic director, Indiana Yala, our facilities director, if you can join us up here for a second, just give us a little rundown, when grabbed my hand, yeah, thank you. So the last time we met, we, at school committee, I think we spent an hour and a half, at least, on public comment, talking about the field. And we have a huge update, and I wanna make sure I get Julie back up in those fields today, because there's a lot going on, practices, and she's been doing some unbelievable coordinating, but I feel like it's important that people know what's taking place since our last school committee meeting. So I'm gonna ask Julie and Dan.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, so...
Let's all chill, okay?
I don't even need Mike, I'm so happy. So the field project is starting. We have, we've met with the contractor today, who's contracting with us, or the boosters, and the town of Boylston CPA funds to get this done. There are a ton of logistical things, which I have it all here. I know you guys are under a time constraint, so I'm not gonna go through the page and half of documents, but what we should let the public know, too, is the fields will be closed after Friday night's game. So there's a game here at four o'clock, and that concludes. Dan and I are gonna work to have signs up, and we are gonna close the fields, including the track. So what our plan is, is we're gonna be in touch with the town of Boylston, so they can hopefully post it on their webpage, we're gonna put it on our webpage, we're gonna post it on social media, so everybody knows it's not just the field that's closing, it's the track. And the contractor was very intent on that, and the reason for that is because they're gonna have big trucks coming in and out of here, and they don't want anybody over there on that field. I also spoke with Principal Segura today, and we're also going to close that side of the school for all of next week, for the gym teachers, and anybody using that space, again, because they're gonna be doing a whole lot of taking things off property, taking them off-site, and then bringing in material, too. And they don't wanna have some kid running over to the portable toilet that's over there, we're gonna move that, too, and then somebody backs up. So we're just gonna close that for the whole first week. So this will commence November 15th. That whole first week, they'll be doing material in, material out.
Julie, can I remember September?
I mean, not around September, sorry.
Yeah, no, no, no.
September 15th, yes. So we're starting September 15th. We're gonna go for that first week of material in, material out. They're gonna put organic spray down, they're gonna strip the field, they're gonna take all the irrigation heads, raise them up, they're gonna cap them, there should be no damage to any of the irrigation heads. The contractor's working with Dan to confirm that all those heads are working, and all the zones are working. So after the fact, we don't come and say, hey, zone four, it's not working, it's never working. So that's gonna be confirmed all ahead of time. And then we will have the sod come in on the end of September, the 30th, or the first, big trucks for sod, big. So we're hoping that they can come and be where the buses are. They will not disrupt the school transportation at all for drop off or pickup. He'll send the first two loads first thing in the morning, 5:00 AM, get some loads done, empty those trucks, and then come back in the middle of the day to get that done. So there should be really no disruption to school stuff, with the exception of that one week and that one day of sod delivery for, that that won't be able to be used.
Julie, you buried the lead, right? So it's not just half the field, I think you always share with everybody, 'cause I think the way we left...
Right, so, right, so there's, we are gonna do the length of the field. There are some areas to the right and the left that don't need to be done, that the contractor is convinced or hopeful that that can be done with chemistry and fertilizer. So we're preserving the right side, which can be done, it's a forty feet over, but the length of the field, all in the middle, which is the bad part, they're gonna completely rip out, and then they're gonna sod that. They're gonna fill it, they're gonna grate, laser grade it, they're gonna do all the things. So there'll be a ton of activity over there. We just really need to get the message out, stress this, that people cannot be over there, definitely next week. Mostly a lot for the general public, too, because this is town. So we're gonna really work with the town to blast this information out, and we'll put signs up. I think that's it.
Julie, you mentioned sod. Last time when we talked about this, it was about seed, and it was like eighteen months, it couldn't be used. We heard that sod, and it changed outside, what's that?
Yeah, that's correct. It is a different contractor doing the work, and this contractor's laying sod. When you lay sod, you can play on it a lot sooner than you can with seed, which is good. I know, I know, this is hard, I spoke about that, these kids losing three playing seasons. So we will not have that. This will be playable. We were thinking, oh my goodness, we're gonna have to relocate a whole track season now, too. That's not the case. They'll be able to be on that field for the spring for track.
If I can just add a little to that as well, too. Jessica Rubino, Dani Yala, Lisa Segura, Julie Lee, myself, Erin, we had a great meeting after our last school committee meeting. Just goes to show, whenever a small group of people together, we get some amazing work done. We're using the original contract data that, when they first, Julie approached them, that came and presented, that's going to do the entire length of that field. So that's, that's a really good thing. We're really excited about this. I appreciate the work you've been doing as well, too. At another time, we'll talk about Fuller, and Randwickney, and Crest, and the Wolston CPA, what's the projects done of recognizing them, right? There's some, some really nice recognition when the field's done. But credit to Julie that's been, our athletic director, has really been organizing the buses, I saw the kids getting dropped off the outside, and getting everything in play, but we're really gonna have a field when this is all done, and we're really gonna be proud of it as well, too. So it was great work that has taken place over the last month, and I thought it was important for you as a school committee, obviously, to know, but also our community to know what's taking place as well, too. Jessica, go ahead.
By getting the sod delivered on the 30th, and starting the project when it is, was that specifically done to allow the growing season to be enough time for it to be in, kind of sodly rooted before the winter comes?
Yeah, exactly. They wanted to aggressively start this as quickly as they could, but there's a whole prep period that has to take place before that. So they're definitely eager to get started, so they're excited that, that the school's willing to work with them for this kind of prep time.
Well, I know people are questioning, why now, why not after soccer, or fall sports?
Oh, you mean next season?
This, like November. Like, why not wait till all...
Correct, yes, it has to be down, and then it has to, it has to tap and learn so much. It has to attach. It has to attach, yes, correct.
And the only thing I want you to be aware of, there's two signers in all the projects that are taking place, and that's Jessica Rubino for the committee of Wolston and CPA, and myself as a superintendent of school. So we're the two signers, and we've been going through Jen Fortune, and making sure that we're all documenting all of the progress and the work that's going on as well, too. Any final questions to Julie?
I just wanna acknowledge that Julie has had to move a lot of bodies to a lot of different places, and I very much appreciate...
In a very short...
Everything that you've been doing, as a parent of a middle school soccer player, to know that you are the one that is making sure everyone's getting where they're supposed to be, is a good feeling. You're organized, you're on top of it. Thank you.
And just as a reminder, it's a step in position, right? So it's not even a full-time position, the work that she's been doing. So thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you. I both also wanted to say one thing, now stop talking. Mr. Cabino also, he drives for this district. If he was not here doing this, we would not probably have had the middle school soccer team. I don't even know we've got JV teams at all, because this is, this is so much key aligning with driving this bus. So just a credit to him, too, that he's done amazing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, very much. Indiana, as well, too, next.
Al, before you continue your report, I guess the chair's report was on there, not much to go, just, school opened well, the staff came in beforehand. I had a good chance to be, I think, Megan, Jess, I think you were there one of those days. I was there with Tracy Novak to help introduce her to the staff, and she took them through events. I don't know what the event was, the activity, because she asked us to leave the room, so that people could speak freely, the school committee or administration there, but got some good feedback, I understand, for the superintendent search. So that was good to introduce her there. That's all I had for that. Al, if you wanna continue?
Sure, I'm gonna go right into the superintendent's report. Couple things, also, I wanna, I'll talk about that in a minute, thanking everybody for coming those days. But if we first can put up the superintendent's search update, if we could, Joe. So I just wanted to be aware of this timeline that is on our website. We are blasting this information anywhere and everywhere. I wanna highlight a couple of different things that are on there. First, September 10th, which is tomorrow, at Tohato Regional Middle High School's a public input session. She's really being geared towards the communities of Burlington and Wolston, right? So she's doing focus groups with individual schools, and with individual administrators, and all, every group that you could possibly. But tomorrow is for Tohato Regional Middle High School Public Input. So we're spreading that word. We talked to Kristen, I talked to April, we're getting that word out as much as we can. So we really want other members that are community, that'll come in and have a conversation. Also, the last one that just came today was that September 18th, Berlin Memorial. We didn't have that on the calendar, because we just finalized that today with Link, and that will take place on September 18th as well. So we really wanna make sure that we're really appetizing that as much as we can as well, too. Lastly, I just wanna say one piece about that, just for a little bit of clarification. What we're doing right now, myself and Beth, and, and working with Tracy, our job is really putting all this information out, right? Making sure that we're going to different locations, we're going to the town halls, tacking up these notices, we're coordinating, making sure that everyone's involved, we're working with our PTOs and our, and all those groupings as well, too. That's really the role that myself and that Jen are doing with this superintendent search. I know there's a little bit of question or conversation about our roles, but we're just here to help out, and that's one of the things that the school committee has asked me to do. Nothing more than that. All those meetings that happen, I, I walk out, Jen walks out, administration walks out. Same thing tomorrow night, so our Tracy is not just standing there by herself, I'll do the introductions, and then I'll walk out, and she'll have that community there as well, too. So just wanna put that publicly out there for clarity, the role that I am doing in terms of the superintendent's search as well, too.
Al, just a clarification. So I know the open house or the curriculum day at BMS is tomorrow, and I know some parents were concerned about that, so can parents go to the September 18th meeting and with Link to also get feedback, as they're also the parents?
So I'm sorry, ask me a question one more time?
Tomorrow night, 9:10 is BMS's curriculum night.
Yes.
BES is on Thursday. But Berlin parents were concerned that we're not gonna be able to attend the session at Tohato. And so for those parents, BES or BMS, if they missed the 9:30, can parents attend that 9:18 meeting?
Absolutely, absolutely. So when we say we're focusing on those individual schools, Tohato's at theirs as well, too, the community ones, versus for our senior citizens, for other people that might not have kids in school, but very similar to what she's doing with the individual schools, she's going to be doing at Tohato for our community as well, too.
It's not a Link exclusive.
That's right, that's right.
That's why I just wanted to clarify.
Sorry, Beth, that's a problem.
It was sponsored by Link.
Could, could times be put on this particular document? Is this, is this is on our website, right?
Sure, sure, absolutely. We can make sure, yeah.
Time from locations would be great.
Jen, if we can make sure of that, yeah, perfect. Good. So just appreciate running the search, even though Tracy's running it all, the logistics, as we know the place, right, and coordinating all that is, is a lot of work. So I just wanna make sure it's clarity of what our roles are and what we're doing in terms of that. Okay, next thing, I'm gonna just defer my time a little bit, if I could, to Mr. Campbell. I know that he has a comment that he'd like to make, and we can just pause for a second on that.
Thank you, superintendent. Marv Levy, the Hall of Fame coach of the soon-to-be world champion Buffalo Bills, once said that, once you start to think about retiring, you ought to. And that is my plan. I have spoken with the superintendent, and I gave him notice that at the end of this school year, I'll be retiring from Berlin-Boylston Regional, the school system, and education, and getting it up before six. These are all my plans. But I wanted to share with all of you how important, how much my time here has meant to me. It has been a real blessing. We are, for all of our struggles, and for all of our disagreements, we are an outstanding school system. And it's been just such an honor for me to be a part of that, even though I make many teachers crazy. I will miss that daily contact, and of course, the kids can't, you know, you can't replace that. But I'm with you, sir, again, I was kind enough to let me announce that to all of you. I think, I think many people already know. And Jack will retire, Jack will graduate from college, I'll retire. I'm gonna find out.
So John, twelve years as a principal?
This is my thirteen.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, thirteen here, twenty overall.
Congratulations. And this is the letter you see behind, this is the letter he submitted to me. I wanted to be respectful to John and have him tell that, that story, and I put that letter late into the drive, just to be respectful of that process as well, too. John, thank you. There'll be many more days that we'll be able to celebrate John's career in Berlin-Wolston, but I wanna make sure that you knew what was taking place. And then I'll be shortly, and I know this is always the thing, right, when someone gives their retirement, the next question is, so who's the next person that's gonna take that job, right? That's just a thing that we do in this world. And I'll be talking shortly to the community in the town of Berlin, and Berlin Memorial, and the school committee about the next steps as we move forward. So thank you, John, and congratulations. So I'd like to just go, if I, you were missing, if I didn't talk to you about the most important thing that's happened in the past last nine days, nine days. It's been very busy, and we've been inundated by many things, a lot of adult things as well, too. But we really wanna say congratulations to a great, successful start in the 25, 26 school year. We had a great first two days with our teachers. I know that a lot of school committee members were able to come, Beth Mancini was also able to join us on one of those days, and Jess, and Megan, and Mike. So thank you for being able to come. I know that during the day, it's, it's difficult, but the first two days with our teachers was outstanding. We actually had the author Katie Novak from the book UDL, which is our focus this year, is UDL with a focus on performance assessment. She was one of our guest speakers, the kickoff of professional learning. She was outstanding. Anyone, I mean, anyone that is there is educated, looking at our educators, all shaking their head. I mean, what a great way to start off our school year. So we're really excited about that, continue that work. We have a complete professional learning plan throughout the entire year, what we're focusing on. And we're working very hard, thanks to the help of Renee, as well as John, and we're all in that, how to further run the school year, so thank you for that. With guides to opening first days of school with our students, they start it on Thursday, August 28th, we welcome 1,107 students into the Berlin-Wolston Regional School District. I wanna thank all of our teachers and staff for a great opening. The buildings look good, our teachers' classrooms were great. We all have a chance to visit each school, and we'll be visiting more and more and seeing what's happening. So we're very excited, and I thank our teachers and staff, and our parents and students for that, as well as the school committee. I know there's been some concerns regarding the buses, right, so there's been things going back and forth. Trust me, it's been a lot smoother than previous years, right? So we're in, we're in a good spot. As you wanted to remind her to our community, we rerouted the bus routes at dismissal for all three of our schools, similar to what we did last year in Berlin. Midway through the year, we made a bold move that I think was a great move for, for the students at Berlin. We rerouted the buses, tough word to say. We did that also this year, as I announced a public session for Tohato and for for Wolston as well, too. So I know there's some concerns, and some parents have sent emails, and, and Erin and the team have been really working all those logistics and doing a phenomenal job of that. I know that some people are saying, well, my student, you know, is getting home a lot later, and he lives close to school. Please understand, it's equity for all of our students, right? It's not equity because of this student, or this family, or because they live nearby. I appreciate that, but our job, that's school committee and administration is making sure it's equity for all of our students. And that really, truly is what is taking place. We'll take a little logistics, bear with us, we're working it all out, but for the most part, it is what's the right thing to do for our school district, and for all of our students, and for all of our families. And for the few emails you're getting from families, please know the emails that I'm getting say, thank you. Now my, my student is not riding the bus for two and a half hours or two hours. It's equity across our town district, and that's something I think we all wanna believe in for our school district as well, too. If I could go on as well, too. The next thing I wanna talk a little bit about is the student handbook. We're gonna be presenting that, and I'll ask that to be in the future agenda items, is the student handbook for the month of October. We'll be introducing some changes. Lisa and I have been talking with the administration about that. We'll present that to you at our next October school committee meeting. Also, a thing that we'll be talking to you about that, I'm sure many of you have heard about, is our sixth grade students being allowed to participate in JV and varsity sports. So it'll be a conversation that when we bring into the school committee, getting their input on that, so we can make those necessary changes. We need to do this in October, because before you know it, we'll be talking about, hate to say it, winter sports. So we need to make sure we have that in place this year. The way the handbook reads, there's some, there's some logo room there, so we wanna make sure we got some clarity on that, so we can put that out there, so that everyone's aware of what's taking place with that. The next thing that we'll do on our October school committee meeting is we'll be talking about graduation requirements, right? That's one of the things that we talked a little bit about last year, with coming on with the MCAS as well, too, there's some changes. We have to be ready by December...
30th.
30th. We have to have a plan in place, so we're bringing it to you in the month of October, and getting some feedback from you guys on that, so we can move forward and get that prepared. So we're not doing like we did last year, right, at that last minute, and making those decisions. So we'll be able to present that to you as well, too. So we'll be asking the school committee if we can put that on, on future agenda items as well, too, for October. I know we're really pressed for time here. I know there are a couple of things that I'm gonna talk about, but I think that will happen later on in the agenda, which is also the DCR report and the communication plan. So I'll refer to when we go to that part of the agenda, and I'll give you some feedback on that as well, too. And that is my, oh, yes, thank you, Lisa, I apologize. And Matthew Dow is going to be our new student liaison. He is a senior this year. We're fully at one there, and he'll be giving his report in the month of October as well, too, and give us the update of what's taking place in our school district as well.
Sounds good. Glad to be back.
Welcome back, thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Alright, moving on to administrator updates. We already talked about John. Do you have anything you wanna say?
I could talk for hours.
So next up is Mr. Jones, he's back, he's director of People Personnel Services.
Sure. And I know we were pressed for time this evening, so I promised to be brief. I provided a report, an update on the updates from the People Personnel Services, largely over the summer and coming into the beginning of the school year, starting off with some introductions for new People Personnel Services staff, including speech and language pathologists, special ed teachers, and we are in the process of onboarding a new VCPA for the district. And we, this summer collectively, we ran a very successful extended school year program at Tohato, our second year in a row, with, for a total of 45 eligible students. The program went very well. That did include also introducing a new van company to families and students and staff. So in the community, you may be seeing white, small transportation vans with the labeling hats for kids. That is a new van transportation service that is contracted through our collaborative, Asset Valley Collaborative. So we've all worked together to iron out any little bumps in that process. Perhaps one of our biggest accomplishments over the summer was making that transition for the Bridges classroom from one elementary school to another. And with a great deal of gratitude to all of the families, the students involved in that, the staff and the administration, including facilities and technology, it really was an all-hands-on-deck type of process to make that happen. That transition has been very smooth and successful, and we hosted an exclusive, but very small and exclusive open house late August, so that we could show off of those rooms, which were in just perfect condition for the start of the school year, and introduce the staff over there with the families. We've done some further alignment of our staff to support our preschool programs, so that we have better continuity between our two preschool classrooms, one here at Tohato and one over in Berlin. So we've been able to further align, so that both of those programs are being serviced by, for example, the same speech and language pathologist, the same VCPA, the same occupational therapist, and that both preschool coordinators are able to work together and have more continuity between both classroom programs. That's something that we wanna continue to work on. Let's see. In terms of budget process, both the 240 and the 262 grants were submitted. The circuit breaker filing was completed over the summer. Those are all important budget activities that happen over the summer. We are in close contact with families over the summer. There's, you know, I know families sort of presume that everybody's away for the summer break, and that's not always the case. There's still a lot of family contact and communication and collaboration to make sure that programs are in place and arrangements are made for students to ensure that they have a successful transition back to school. And finally, a big impact for us in this coming school year will be that there's some changes to the special education timelines as required by DESI. We used to be working with a set of timelines that was for 10 days. This year, we will be working with a timeline that is five days. That is a significant change in practice. And of course, this isn't Berlin-Boylston, this is just all of Massachusetts. This is a requirement everywhere. So we've done a lot of work over the summer. I've been working with the special education coordinators and the administrative assistants of the PPS office, to see what types of adjustments we can make to our procedures, so that we can remain in compliance, and also still be very thoughtful in our IEP meetings with families, and not sort of changing the process and the amount of time and attention that they get. So that, that's a big shift for us. Last year, it was the new IEP form. This year, it's a, a big change and shift in our timelines. So something that we're working on.
Jen, you mentioned 10 days. Is that like a request of services to restation, or what, like, what, sorry, in what specific?
Sure. So historically, up until, they made, actually DESI reinterpreted the timelines in June. Pretty much it was the last week of school, it was this big announcements. I think special education directors everywhere were a little taken back for it, but the 10 days used to apply that if we had a special education meeting that resulted in an IEP, that we would then have 10 school days to put that IEP into the parents' hands. We now have five. And then there are other nuances, if you will. There are other circumstances that might actually shorten that, but it just is a general rule, very broad brush, five days. And that is a very quick turnaround for the amount of staff that work on that document, and to make sure that we've captured everything from a team meeting, and making sure that it's in that IEP, that we're providing that same quality of documentation while we're being compliant.
Any other questions?
Yeah, thank you.
No? So the only thing, Jen was supposed to give her a call last month, so it's, we're listing a little of the timelines off, but that is for some of the work, because the state of schools. One last thing, our CPAC meeting is?
Oh, that's right. Thank you for mentioning that. So CPAC is hosting, they have an annual meeting greet, and it will be in person this coming Monday, here in this room at 6:30. Everybody is welcome. CPAC loves to be able to meet school staff, administration... Everybody is welcome. CPAC loves to be able to meet school staff, administration, school committee, other parents as well. CPAC does a really great job of supporting families, you know, throughout the district.
Thank you. All right. Thanks, Jenelle. Next up, the Director of Curriculum and Grants, Grade 6012, Ms. Renee.
Thank you. Just quickly want to talk about strategic plan and just give an update where we're at. I've talked about it a lot, so I'm not going to kind of give you the overview, but we're in that process. And I am in need now to submit the final names of committee members because meetings will start next month. Full committee meetings start in October as well as the focus group meetings start in October. To date, we actually have about 17 committed individuals, which is great. We have elected officials from both towns onboard. We have parents from both towns, a couple of high school students. So we have teachers. So I'm really pleased with the, with the response and, and that's intriguing definitely for the principals onboard and sending out the information. And just letting us kind of preview things at the school committee meetings, just to, I think that is really helpful, like the month ahead of time, you know? So, so thank you for letting us do that. So right now really I'm in need of at least one school committee member's name. It's important that we add that as well, that voice, right, to, to our, our meetings. And then from that point at the end of this week, all those names go ahead to our consultants at Teaching and Learning Alliance. You had met Pam and Seth, I think it was last week, right? They came in. And then they'll, you know, they've created kind of, you know, a master folder, a Google folder that will start all in, in putting our data and things like that. And they'll give us, you know, next steps, right? So that we're all prepared for, for the meetings. The meetings are on Wednesdays. They chose kind of that, that intermediate time of that 3:30 to 6:00, but they'll probably be just about a, you know, could go, you know, an hour and a half to two hours. They're trying not to fill the whole time, but people's calendar just needs to be free for those, those dates that were set out. So I leave that to however you want to deal with that, right? So I don't, you know, I don't know policy wise if that has to be vote or, or, you know, just someone sends me a submission. I will leave that up to the chair to decide how that, that needs to work.
Thanks, Jenelle.
Yeah.
So we are going to.
Okay.
We already voted to have the committee, the strategic plan.
Yep.
Just thinking about what everyone's involved in. I know Lisa doesn't have a lot of projects at the moment. Would Lisa be a good fit for the meeting?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, absolutely. Anybody would be a great fit, great voice, you know, just depending right at the time. I know you guys all are, there's so much going on this year. I would really appreciate that. And I just, and again, I just want the community to know, but also the school committee to know, as I'm working on the ESSA grant to try to get in tonight by midnight, this is essential. We don't have a working document and so this is, this work has to happen. So it's like our district improvement plan, we're done, we're finished out in 2025 by January. So, you know, it seems like, oh gosh, why are we doing so many things at one time? It, it's just the work that really has to happen in the future.
And Mike, just, this is huge work, right? This is important work, I mean, coming up, especially because we don't have them, right? To revisit it, right, will be easier, right? Okay, three years around, we gotta look at it, stop, make it show some changes. But this will help budget wise, this will help curriculum wise, this will help with every single, you know, I can't say enough. Once you have that strategic plan done, we, that's our focus for the next five years, right? And if someone says, this is a really good idea, is a part of our strategic plan, if not, we're going to put it to the side. This will keep us focused instead of just being, and I, and I say that with all love of this community, we're just sort of all over the place right now. We really need to be aligned and people are asking that for us. Department of Education is asking that for us. We have your strategic plan, you need to have it. So we'd love you to be on that, you know? And then please know every month, every month Renee will come here and give you an update of this. Our Renee and Lisa will give you an update. School committee will be absolutely involved with every piece of this, but this is huge work and it's important work. Does anyone disagree with this?
Well, I'm curious, I know other committees, we tried to have a Berlin Boylston boundary, so I didn't know if we'd want to do that.
I think right now with the size, 17 people already, and I think you've got two or three more that are coming. I think one liaison from the school committee. Renee, I think that's what, that's what the ask was.
Yeah, they want, they want us to have under, under 20. So right now we're at 17. This brings us to 18.
There were some other, I think some other people who mentioned.
We have some elected officials from Berlin, FinCom, we have select board that they, they've put on. We have also, I'm sorry.
Boylston officials.
Boylston officials, there's two, I don't have the names yet, but they're slated here. I think their meeting was either last night or tonight. She's emailing me their names.
I gotta tell you, Aaron and I did it with 40, how many people?
We're five or so.
It's work. Like you gotta sit down and do the work. So that's the only thing I'm telling you, like, we gotta get to work in this.
The nice thing is they'll be, and again, I just want to alert and remind, right, that those focus groups and one for the elected officials is part of your school committee meeting next month. So October is like chock full. We'll have to kind of figure that piece out, right? But that, that'll be a specific time for elected officials at the next school committee meeting. I believe it's slated for October.
The only other thing they'll say when PM meets with everybody, because we've done this, they're going to give you the time and say, this is the time, right? Because trying to coordinate 17, 18, 19, 20 people on calendar, if you're, if you're on it, you, 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 you gotta commit to that time. And you can't say, I'm going to miss this one, this one, this one, because the work's just gotta keep getting done.
Yeah, I was curious, like the Portrait of a Graduate was a lot of different people inputting into a lot that aligns with the strategic plan.
Yeah.
So I'm just hoping that that document is taken.
It'll be part of the data. So that all gets in, pretty much anything that the district has had for the last, you know, five to seven years kind of gets pushed into this data folder. And in that, and again, those focus group committees, you know, those pieces too, if there's, if there is, you know, anecdotal data too, right? That we don't have, that's tangible, that's the time to, to report that out, which will be really helpful. And that's why they have those sessions.
Did you have, do you have the final document of that, the Portrait of the Portrait? I know a parent from Berlin.
I recall. And I, I am pleased publicly not being disrespectful, but you need a strategic plan first. That's the umbrella. Then the Portrait of a Graduate is one of the, the pillars underneath it. But we sort of, this district sort of went here, but I'll do this first. So we've got to get a strategic plan from the data from the Portrait of a Graduate, which a lot of districts aren't doing anymore, right? Because it's the strategic plan they're working on. We will absolutely use that data from all the people that gathered that. I do, I think you sent me, or someone sent me a copy of the Portrait.
Yeah. Yeah, there's like 30 different people involved in that over several different weeks.
Absolutely. And, and that's not like finally memorialized anywhere, so that we're even looking at it as a document and keep referring to it. And I would say to, you know, to Mike and the school committee that, that from all it should be an agenda item on your school committee is a strategic plan. How, how is that, how are we looking at that? How are we working on that once it's done in, in full?
Just, you know, and one last just note is that coming into this role, you know, I, we heard from Al how important this was. But coming into my new role, pretty much every, every meeting I have about a grant or a job alike, so where, what's your strategic plan? Where is it? And I was like, well, we're working on it. Like it, it's really like the question right now. District improvement plans are helpful, but they're kind of even, you know, if, if that's kind of like an underlayer, right? So this, this piece is, is really essential work. And again, I think it'll help then all the other work that has to be done.
So will we get our finished product from this work? Will be a strategic plan and a district improvement plan? Or is it one and the same? Cause I know we had a district improvement plan. I understand that it was a three year, five year plan. I understand that it ended. We never made one last year. So this is our attempt to make, so is this going to be both or what, what's the finish?
No, it's, it's, it's separate. I mean, but it's, it has the improvements that are rooted in the data. And, you know, without calling it the improvements, it's kind of what, what, what based on the data of the district needs to happen next? What's the next step?
Yeah.
So for example, for the big federal grant that I'm working on right now, it is download your strategic plan or if you don't have one, your district improvement on that. I had to write a document kind of surmising where we're at, right? And inputting all the great work we've been doing, right? The PD stuff, where we are, all the work, because we are doing work, but just saying, here's why. We don't have, you know, a.
We don't have either.
What's that?
Currently we do not have either.
That's correct.
And can I just clarify one other piece to that? So a district improvement plan, a district improvement plan is exactly what it says. It's a district improvement plan. A strategic plan is getting our, our, our people in our community, the parents that don't have students in our schools because they graduated. Our, our seniors, right? They're all given, because they're, they're paying their taxes and they're paying, they're giving money to, to the schools. Like we want their input as well too. So that's really where the strategic plan is. It's the community involvement. So everybody knows at town meetings, no one's surprised that we're looking for this amount of money in our budget because we're focusing on getting new technology or whatever that happens to be, we decide. But all the communities involve as opposed to the district is just our district writing that. Sorry.
Yeah, no, and I think that's important to note too. So, you know, in addition to those focus group meetings, right? There's going to be, they're, and they're generating it, right? So that's what's wonderful that you've proved this group working. They're going to shoot up surveys to all of these stakeholders as well, right? For them to, you know, be, be a voice and even if they're not able to attend those focus group meetings. So I'll be, that's good.
Cool. All right. Thank you, Renee.
Yep.
Next up, Director of Finance Operations, Mr. Aaron Alleswell.
Sure thing. So the item you'll see on the agenda and in your packets is the capital plan. So this summer we did capital walks with town officials as well as school committee members along with principals, along with Daniella. Taking feedback and looking at the conditions, walking on roofs, looking at boilers, digging into things. So this is more or less the updated results. This is an update to what's going to become our 10-year running capital plan. It's a work in progress. We're building it out. But I want to highlight some key items for fiscal '27. I'll start with Berlin Memorial. You will see the cost of mini splits in fiscal '27 has gone up significantly. That is because there are no longer rebates for a lot of these items. With that said, Daniella is working with the town of Berlin to, to write a grant. It's, so the, the potential is there that, that we may have all or most of this paid for through the grant. One of the key items within the grant and, and I think to think of as we're talking about these mini splits is that it's not just AC, it's also heat. So if a boiler were to go down or something like that, you now have access to keep the school running in the winter, for example. So if, if a boiler went down, that's one of the benefits that, that BES has. If something were to happen in the winter, a boiler were to go down, they would have access to heat. So important consideration. We'll have updates as to where that grant is. I sat in a very preliminary meeting, just talking about what this looks like. You will see the roof is still on here. We're working on updating quotes. Solar panels are still on there. My recommendation would remain probably doing, if, if the town is intent on doing solar panels, probably doing it the year after you put the roof on. There's always the potential when you put in your roof down, you're going to have issues and if you have issues, you're then going to have to pull up all the panels to then deal with the issues, the warranty issues. So I'd probably recommend get a year on the roof first, but you know, I'm not going to argue with what the town wants to do. And if they have, you know, what looks like about $700,000 to pop into the roof, I'm not sure we'd argue if they want to put solar panels on or anything. Going down the list, you'll see the phone system is a, an analog phone system. So all of our other systems, our voice over IP, digital systems, we would like to consolidate our systems. And some of the money we're talking about here in the Tohoto is to work on consolidating that. Joe is in the process of getting us a sort of an overall quote to sort of establish a district wide system. We're also talking to Verizon about what's effectively a cellular based system for the entire district. So there's a couple of things on the, that, that are on the plate. So this isn't a done deal. We're playing around with things. You'll see at all schools, technol, all of the technology remains, the devices and things like that. Going on to Boylston, we definitely have the continuation of the parking lot into the back for $150,000. Dan's going to get some better numbers on that, but that's a ballpark from the past. You'll see there's two bathrooms that we really need to update. Those bathrooms are in pretty rough shape. Overall, we'd really like to get the sinks, the toilets, the whole sort of shebang done. The, you'll see the tractor for exterior maintenance. That's a want, not a need. We have talked a little bit about getting a robotic mower for the district possibly, and we're still looking into that. That's not off the table and that might be a good option for that. Wood, replacing the wood chips with rubber, that would be creating a rubber mat, not rubber wood chips, an actual rubber mat that would be absorbent. Again, big price tag on that. I'm not, it's kind of a want as opposed to a need. It would eliminate the need to continually replace the wood chips. But I don't think, you know, that the cost necessarily quickly justifies the payback isn't that quick on that. So, you know, we'd have to do some thinking. Same device replacement as all of the other school, as, as BMS. You're going to see a lot of items on Tohoto. Tohoto hasn't had capital in a couple of years. So a lot of these are items, you'll see a lot of the items on the left-hand side from '26 that weren't done and they're now being pushed into '27. Some of the big ones are the auditorium light projector, sound system and theatrical lighting. Those are the big ones. We've sharpened pencils a couple of times on those. You know, we're going to try to prioritize those. I'll, I'll work with Lisa and Joe and whoever else we need to kind of figure out what's, what will get us over the hump at least. You will see refurbished the track. I think we really need to talk to Julie about bringing someone in to take a look at what's, what's left life wise on that track and where this fits into the whole scheme. Middle school furniture, Lisa and I still have to talk about what it's going to cost to finish that off. I don't think it's going to take a full $176,000, but we'll, we'll look at how to maybe even manage that over a couple of years if needs be. Adding parking, this is something that came up this year. We had an engineer volunteer their time to put something together for us, a schematic as well as a cost estimate. It was maybe not quite $650,000, but I'm, I'm putting it there as just a placeholder. There's the potential for a $100,000 grant. You know, this, this would inevitably end up competing with everything else on this list. So there's a lot of conversation that needs to be had internally as well as probably with our towns, right? Having both our towns onboard to do this is going to be essential. Phone system again, similar to BES, if we're going to have an overarching phone system that provides consistency between the schools. We really need to get BMS up and then we probably need to upgrade Tohoto's system. BES may need some upgrades as well. Again, Joe's looking at sort of an umbrella approach. Device replacement, that continues to be, we've sharpened the pencil. I sharpened it with Joe. So that $80,000 is a pretty definitive need. We're going to have to have some serious conversations about whether we can continue a one-to-one program without that. So we haven't had new devices in this building for two years. The good note is, Google has on Chromebooks has extended the lifespan a little bit. So the licensing on Chromebooks is now a little bit longer, which buys us a little time, but we still have, you know, we, we've foregone it for two years. So a lot of the Chromebooks in this building are showing their age. And that pretty much covers it. I'm trying to, you'll see down at the bottom, add information about the individual schools. So you'll see a built date for BMS. I'm trying to get roof dates, boiler dates. So that, you know, informationally that tells us how old is the roof, how old is, is the building itself and things like that. Any questions?
You said it's not going to cost the original estimated to finish off the middle school furniture. Why is that?
Well, so a couple of things. Lisa was able to buy some today. We also had a pretty significant donation from Fitchburg Schools. So Daniella and I, I spoke with the business manager at Fitchburg Schools who was closing, in the process of closing a school building. And they had some surplus furniture. Daniella and I rented a U-Haul and went up there and lugged furniture for a day into the U-Haul truck, brought it down, got it out here. So, so those are two things that helped out. You know, I think that the initial number was also kind of a ballpark. We'd rather be high than low, right? So there's, there's certainly always the opportunity to sharpen some pencils there. The goal is to, you know, replace what we can within a timeline. There may be other things that become higher on the priority list. You know, renting out this facility is important to us and making it useful to the communities. If we don't do something with the auditorium, pretty soon we're going to be in a, in a hard place. So I would, you know, I think Lisa and I can have those conversations about where things sit on the priority list. So I would, you know, I think Lisa and I can have those conversations about where things sit on the priority list.
And the lights in the gym too.
Yeah. Yep. Right.
Um, the B M S roof. I was listening to the, did you listen to the support meeting last night? They were talking about putting it on the fall town meeting.
Oh, okay.
And that they were looking for updated, Scott Hopkins was saying that he, he wanted to take that section out so that there would be less animosity about what this school are asking for in the spring. So he was, he said that someone was gonna be reaching out about getting updated pricing that they were looking, they were really, it seemed interested in moving.
This is the first I've heard. So if, if you could have, talk to anyone, have them reach out to me and Dan. And we will um, do everything we can. Dan can reach out to the original roofing company.
They just opened the ballboard last night.
See what we can do. I mean, you know, maybe some roofers that wanna get a roof in before uh, it snows. I've done, I've done roofs in like late November. So if, if they have a town meeting and can put the money together, they might be able to pop.
Today, I don't know what it's about. I haven't been able to respond to her email yet. So I did get an email from her. So it could very well be that. So sorry about that. So it could be that or whatever else. I'm not sure.
Um, Erin, did you say that you're talking about having like almost like a rubber mat for the playground? So interestingly enough, I drove past West Boylston today and, you know, it's 20 miles an hour. So you can't help but notice what's going on. And I did notice that student in a wheelchair was able to be on the playground because of that. So I'm really glad to see that that is on there.
Yes.
Um, because it makes it accessible for all.
Yeah, as we do playground equipment now, we're really looking at accessibility. So Rob has um, some, some funding from the town this year um, for uh, for capital to buy playground equipment. And a priority for him is gonna be accessible structures. Anything we're gonna do is gonna be accessible.
That's exactly what it is, right? So just build a playground for certain kids and build it so all kids enjoy it, right? The new playground, the building in Rapid Valley, phenomenal how they're doing that. Um, and the accessibility for all students to be able to enjoy that, right? So even those things that are just maybe designed for students to have disabilities, all students can enjoy that as well too. So it's great.
Yep.
Erin, there was something you wanted to put on next month's agenda that you talked to me about, maybe that you wanna make sure for October?
Um, is that budget stuff?
Yep.
Yeah. So we'll, I'll provide a sort of close-out budget summary. Um, that will include sort of a line item budget. We recall in December, we approved that sort of one budget item, not sure where things are and knowing that we could meet that number, but exactly how. Um, I'll provide that. That's not necessary, it wasn't necessary to sort of placate Desi in that moment. Um, but we'll want to placate our auditor in the moment when they come in. So before we do that, we'll wanna make sure that sort of all of those line item approvals are in place. Um, and I initially thought maybe we'd put it on this one. Um, and, and we kind of, with the timing and things like that and the ability to maybe close it, make sure a few more things are closed out before we, we do that would be helpful. So um, I think October would be a great time to do that.
All right, thank you, Erin. Uh, last up, we have Director of Technology, Mr. Joseph Stoudt.
So um, I'll be rather brief here, um, with the, the statement that I gave to the school committee, that's a document. Um, I provided that as a date. We were, we had 113 help desk tickets from start of the school year from faculty and staff. Uh, we had 97 of them um, already acknowledged and closed. Obviously, they, they come in every day, so we continue to turn over that and we check our numbers and make sure that we're responding to each ticket in a timely manner. Um, we do have an update on the security camera installations at both uh, Boylston and Berlin. Uh, I've been working with Dan and we've been working with the installation company. They're coming out. I believe it is September 26th, that Friday. Um, they're sending out a rather large crew to both schools uh, to get all of the installation uh, completed in that single day. Uh, to date, all of the wiring has been completed, so there should be little to no disruption in the schools themselves. Um, externally, there may be a ladder thrown against the building uh, while they're, they're mounting the brackets to install the cameras, but all of the in-school work took place over the summer. So there should be little to no disruption in the school buildings themselves. Um, and then our new content filtering securely has been rolled out. It is in its final stages of being completely rolled out. There's a few more extensions that we're installing um, before complete autonomy within the system and it is introduced to families as, and teachers as far as the classroom portion for the monitoring and the home portion that parents have the ability to access and use at home. So once everything is completely installed and rolled out and we've, we've checked it and worked through it on the backend, um, after that's done and all the checks are done, we will start providing the teachers in the public with how they will be able to access that information themselves. Um, so that is coming. Uh, so one, two items that I left off my report. One is the Berlin Insurance Group has um, or is in the process of wanting to donate some gently-used large screen monitors um, to the district. There is a letter from them, a letter of intention in the drive, um, amongst our documents with their intention of donating the, to the school district. Um, both Mark Adams and Deb Montano are alum of the district and they just wanted to give back to the district. So um, you'll see it later on on the agenda. We're looking, I'm looking for approval from the school committee to accept this donation from them. And they're donating roughly 30 to 40 uh, monitors that are bigger than 19 inches. Um, so they, they range, there's some 22-inch monitors, maybe a 25 or so. But um, I've, I've seen them. They're, they're in good condition. Um, and they would definitely help us in reduce some of the costs that could be prepared by the district. So I'm grateful for them to reach out and, and want to donate these. So I'm looking for the, the school committee's approval on that.
And, and we haven't accepted those yet because I was waiting for that to happen for you guys to vote, accept that before all of a sudden they appear to our schools and, and you guys not knowing about that as well too. So.
And then lastly, I know that Jess will touch upon this in her subcommittee group uh, update. But um, I met with the administration, both Superintendent Ganer and myself. We met with the administration of Tohanto and we had a lengthy, lengthy discussion with them. And I thank them for reaching to, reaching out to their teachers and just getting everyone involved on the update that a lot of families have been reaching out to the, to us about. And I do apologize if you hadn't heard back from the district. We were just trying to make sure that um, we had everything aligned and everyone was in agreement and everyone was on the same page. Um, but we have found a way to open up emails for parents at the middle school level. Um, so grade six, seven, and eight, uh, we are opening up the emails for parents. That's associated to the student in Power School as their guardian. Um, that, that information will be rendered into our Google App and Console to open that up. Um, this is only affecting grades six, seven, and eight. Uh, after the conversation with the administration, at Tohanto, we felt it's important for after-school activities, sports and all these extracurriculars that may change at the last moment um, for, for students to be able to get in touch with their parents or parents to be able to get in touch with their students. So it's important there. But the big thing is, is that we wanna make sure that our families know that this is not an open platform to have conversations with our students throughout the day. We still wanna make sure that our parents know that the, the, the first line of communication with the students is through the main office, through the nurse's office, through the guidance office before this. This is for those um, uh, pop-up events that, where communication has to happen a little quicker. We know that not all students have cell phones and we wanna make sure that we're supporting all of our students across the board. So I know that uh, Jess will uh, provide a little bit more of an update with that on our subcommittee, but um, I just wanted to make sure that I was able to address the school committee and let them know where we were at with our thought process and our decision-making and what we're doing moving forward as a district, as it pertains to middle school emails and, and parent communication. So that is my report from the technology department. So does anybody have any questions?
The time, not till next week though. Don't try to email.
The goal, the goal is the week of the 15th. The week of the 15th, at some point in time, you'll hear from um, from the middle of high school and, and let parents know that it's open. Um, but the goal is the week of the 15th. Um, depending upon how it goes and after doing some checks, I don't know if it'll be the beginning of the week or the end of the week, but it's, my goal is the week of September 15th.
And I don't wanna speak on behalf of the administration, but like what Joe stressed is that the number one priority first is you go through your office, you go through the nurse, you go through the guides. We're teaching lifelong learners, right? We need to be able to teach some of those skills to come down to the office and engage in a conversation and say, this is what I need. Can I get help if I need help? Can I call my house, right? All of those things, though, that's, that's our job as educators, not just having them on the phone and texting or emailing and stuff, but also those interpersonal skills. So please, that's our first line, is making sure those conversations happen through the offices.
And the school nurse.
And the school nurse. Did I not say that? Yes, and the school nurse, yes. Any last questions for Joe?
Thank you.
All right, thanks everybody. So it's just about 6 o'clock. We have a hard stop at 6:30. The attorney will be here. So we're gonna just hold on to some committee updates, get through the business items. Whatever time we have left between then and 6:30, we get the subcommittee updates. All right, so the first business item, uh, I think I have a motion to approve the communication plan point of contact. Also, before that, second public comment, okay? We put this on, I think Jess, I think this was your idea some time ago. Um, for people who may not be able to get here at 5 o'clock for public comment, but may still wanna say something on the, the business items. So is there anyone here who would like to make a public comment on any of the business items?
On the business items. So that would be right now.
Oh yeah, she is the business item, right? Yeah, so that's different than the public. I think, right?
Not yet. She just needs to know what she needs to say.
Yeah, yeah. That's why I stopped myself on that one. So, so no public comment? All right, so the first business item we're gonna take care of is uh, the Boylston Elementary School B E C request to serve alcohol at Pumpkin Fest. And that is now.
Hello, good evening. Uh, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak to you. Um, I'm Raina. I'm representing the B E C. Uh, we are hosting our second Animal Pumpkin Fest at the school. It is a family-friendly event filled with games and activities. Um, hopefully we'll get a little pumpkin patch this year with donations maybe. Uh, but there's contests, raffles, all kinds of stuff. Um, it's going to be Saturday, October 4th, from 3 to 6 P M. Um, this year, we are seeking your approval for both the use of the B E S grounds as well as the one-day liquor license. Um, with, as we have with previous events, we have a local bar that will donate alcohol to us. The confirmed donor is a food vendor as per the Alcoholics Remedies Control Commission. Um, we plan to in turn sell it for $10 per beverage with a maximum of three beverages per person. Um, IDs are gonna be checked. We will have wristbands on anybody that is of age. Um, the alcohol servers will be strictly controlled. Safety is our priority, of course. Um, it's going to be limited to a designated area. It will be monitored by all staff there as well as hopefully the police detail that we have requested. Um, let's see, what else is here for you guys? Uh, no outside alcohol will be permitted to the fest and we will not allow alcohol inside the school. Um, we will have a TIPS certified server. We are on the agenda for the town selectman meeting on September 22nd. We have event insurance and as I previously mentioned, we requested a police detail already. Um, events like Pumpkin Fest, these are our critical fundraisers for our school. Um, you know, this is one of our main, main fundraisers. And as we just talked about, the, the universal design, playground equipment and how essential it is and how wonderful it is to include all children, that's what we're fundraising for this year. You know, we really need playground equipment at, at Boylston. As a previous educator, I mean, it's just not to part. We can do so much better. I know we can. And I know that this event will help us do that. Um, you know, the liquor license, it's not the, the focus of the event. It's just a little optional, optional event that adults can have. It is very controlled. Uh, but there is, you know, research that does indicate that if we include alcohol, the sales generally see a noticeable increase. Sometimes you get more attendees. Sometimes you get more vendor support. You know, there's just some perks there. Um, and that will, you know, it will see a noticeable increase in our attendance and what we make for the fundraiser. So it's all coming back to the playground equipment and to the kids at the school. So we are seeking your permission for that.
Thank you. Uh, does anybody have any questions?
How are you doing? I know last year you had like three little things on a bracelet for controlling that.
Yeah, exactly. So more things that we've done in the past that are effective and proven.
Can people sell their, sell their people?
No. Unless it's on, you're trapped probably.
It's one of those that you have to cut off with scissors.
I know, yeah. I'm like, I don't know, they can be sneaky, but, but we're such a small community, so we kinda see each other now.
Anybody else? All right, I think I have a motion then to uh, well, before I do that, should we? You mentioned you were gonna be getting insurance and getting the liquor license?
Yes.
So I just wanna put that into the motion, if anybody doesn't mind. Uh, so I have a motion, please, to approve the Boylston Elementary School B E C request to serve alcohol at Pumpkin Fest, subject to the B E C group satisfactorily providing proof of the event insurance and the, all the proper liquor licenses and tips-trained servers and a police detail, right?
The select board will prove that, yeah, on the 22nd.
Does, do they have that motion?
So moved.
Yes.
Or Jen. Good thing it's recorded. AI will do it.
All right, any final comments?
I just have a question. When you have to get all of that stuff, does the al- do you really make money off the alcohol? When you have to get the event insurance and the?
Uh, we do because we have to get event insurance anyway if there's some of the activities going on. You know, we have to get, you know, there's a certain amount of people attending the event so that falls under bylaws under our town. So we have to, you know, apply for other permits and things like that. So, um, I believe in the past, I just received some data that, you know, it, it can make us up from anywhere like 500 to 1500, like at an event. It's kind of ranges, but since it's donated, I mean, it's all just profit, so.
It's a wonderful event.
I know, yeah. It's, it's just great to have this, you know, connection for us, just for extra money.
Any final questions? All in favor?
I'm.
Anyone against?
No, but I, I have to abstain. So what do I say for that?
Anyone abstaining?
So abstaining your vote, your presence.
Present, that's right.
You didn't go hot man, it's behind you.
I did not. I didn't say anything. That is present. It's my vote, Jen.
So I believe that is four in favor and one abstaining. So that motion passes. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you guys so much for your time. And thank you all that you do for our community and our kids.
Thank you.
All right, uh, could I now please have a, a motion to approve the communication plan point of contact?
So.
Lori?
Second.
Megan? Al, this is yours.
Yes, so last month, um, I introduced you to school committee the point of contact for our communication plan. I have this on here as well. Um, this is something that our admin team worked on during the summer and finalized during our summer retreat. Uh, we have been posting this everywhere in our district and have found success with it. Again, we've only been school nine days, right, and have already found success with using this and using this as a reference. Um, the hope of this is to help direct families if they have any questions or concerns to whom they call in the contact information that goes on. Um, this will also be helpful to all of us to reference. Um, with regards to school committee and providing them um, direct information. I hope you're appreciating the district communication that you're getting from my office on a weekly basis as well too. So I know there was a question and comment they had about that communication flowing back and forth. So we have this communication going out this way, um, for all of our parents to reference. Uh, I also know that you, you brought about an issue about me getting that communication to you guys as well too. So that Friday communication is coming out to you guys. We'll, we'll get better and get more involved. I appreciate our, our principals and, and Janet and our admin helping out with that as well too. Um, it will get more detailed as we go along as well too. But we really need to have a, a point of contact. We really need this as a reference point. Um, and, you know, in the past, I just asked for a vote on this and so that this way we're in agreement across the entire district that this is what we believe in. Um, and I think this is something that if you look at other school districts and also in our strategic plan, they're gonna be asking, where is your communication plan, right? So we've already done the work here, uh, to move it forward. So I ask at this point that you um, move forward and vote this in favor.
Any questions for Al on that?
I'm curious. I know like for the bus issues, there was a pop-up and I think that someone mentioned there'll be a pop-up for one of the other surveys, but I wondered if this would be a useful pop-up too, like, were you trying to, you know, contact?
Sure. So sometimes, you know, if you get so many pop-ups happening, you're not paying attention to any of that stuff, right? So we're just being mindful of that. So Jen and I have the plan that will wait to the end of this week for um, the, the buses. Um, next week, we're going to be putting all the things for the superintendent search and then this would be our next one. But we just have so many things, we just don't wanna, that you start ignoring them, right? So we just wanna be mindful of that. But yes, that is ultimately.
Like some type of like very like in, in your face on the first page.
Yeah. These are also, the search office should come there, literally on the table that's there, so people have them. Um, I drop them off at the town of Boylston, the town of Berlin as well too, so people have those as reference. April and Kristen have them, so I've shared these with everybody, so this is, this is just for all of us, right? You have a question, you have a concern, you have a comment, this is the protocol we follow. And it will just help with that communication flowing back and forth. The, the other part, it's helpful for me as well too, to get that communication from you guys and giving it to you. Um, you know, it, we're, we're fortunate, there's six of us, but there are some school committees that made it up to twenty-five. Like that communication flowing back and forth, it's important, um, that it goes through this proper channels. Again, that's why I'm working on that Friday communications to you guys as well to make sure you have all the communication that's taking place.
Any final questions?
Yeah, please.
I was just wondering if we should include in there questions about the superintendent or about school committee activities, who those questions should be directed to? Maybe the school committee chair?
School committee, uh, you mean, communication coming in or going out?
Coming in, like questions about us, our process or anything like that, or about the superintendent. Cause we've had, you know, comments like that since that's part of our purview.
So the school committee is on there, I believe, as.
Only for budget and policy.
Anything that rolls up to the superintendent.
All of our emails.
Yeah, all of our emails are on there. Anything that rolls up to the superintendent on there, I think is asterisk. That he reports to the school committee, but yeah, we can do something.
It was just a thought, it was just a thought.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm hoping this is a living document, right? So this will all, because it has to change all the time, right? So people, places, position, I can certainly look at it with our admin team and work with the chair of school committee and present next month even another version of this, our admin, I suppose, as well too.
That was gonna be my question, so like anytime something changes, do we have to re-vote on this?
You shouldn't have to, right? You shouldn't have to vote on a specific.
Alright.
Even when we, I'm getting some information, we got a Lisa's handbook, right? So the Tuhantos handbook, like, we have to change Renee's name to Joe's name.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
I shouldn't have to bring that to vote for you guys all the time.
Yes, that's what I mean, like voting on something with names, I'm like.
Yeah.
Cause it's like on someone that I don't.
Correct me from wrong now, but I think we voted earlier last year, I don't, was it for a specific document? Or did we vote a process that whenever it comes to replacing a name, they have the authority to just do that?
I thought we just took names out of everything and said we weren't gonna use names. But this is like a, a huge necessity, like I think it's great that you have everyone's name and email address right in one spot and.
If you need to replace a name in something, you shouldn't have to wait until the next meeting.
Yeah, I agree. I, I just don't wanna have to like look at this every month and vote on it, um, with the length of our meetings, you know.
But I mean, if you're changing the name of someone, that's just because the position has, that person has changed position, I don't think we need to vote on them.
The vote, the vote for this is because we don't actually have it.
It's a process, yeah.
So the vote is more on the process.
So I mean, we could amend the motion to say future changes in position, who holds the position do not need to be voted.
Okay, so can you make that amendment?
It just one last, and this is a blue box, so I've asked you guys previously, right? I asked you before, we have specific names for Title IX, I'd like to get the name off and put the position. Now, the importance of this is you need to have specific people, you need to know who you're gonna call, the emails and, and all of those telephone numbers as well too.
But you'll be on top of her, Jen, sorry, I know.
Yes.
Be on top of like if someone, you know, as, like you said, if some, things change, numbers change, emails change, it needs to be updated so that people aren't going into a black hole.
That's right, that's why I want it to be a living document.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Can I speak to this?
Sure.
So this document i- is a live document, right? So off of our website, if you click on directory, you can see the link right there, it brings you to the live document. So as things become fluid and people change or anything like that, we make one change, it's gonna cross the website, it becomes updated.
Oh, okay.
So it, it's not, we're not opening up a PDF here that has to be changed in five places. Um, like we had a conversation about the calendar.
That's what I'm worried about.
Yeah, no, so what I'm trying to do on our website is I'm trying to make everything live live. So as we make changes, it changes across the website instantly and we don't have to worry about where, what pages do we put it on, or, or how was that site built versus the other site? Um, we're, we're trying to make it systematically, so if we make a change, it, it reflects across the website without having to update the website.
So the motion right now on the table is to approve the point of contact. The points of contact aren't specific people, they're teacher, coach, whoever, right? That's the vote on the table. Um, the people who fill out roles by default of life happening, like the academics, you go to your teacher, that's gonna be a different person every year for every person, whether it could last. So we know who those specific people are.
Okay.
Athletics, first contact is the coach. If your kid is on middle school soccer, you're not gonna contact varsity basketball coach or that. So we, we shouldn't need to change that all the time. So I think changing names as to who the actual people are is fine. The vote is for the point of contact, but the points of contact, which of those sort of positions?
So we might not even need an amendment as well, okay?
I don't think we do.
Okay, I would agree with that because you just said point of contact, you didn't make an amendment yet, did you?
No, she didn't.
We're just voting on the chain of.
We're just voting on the chain of command, which I'm fine with, yeah.
Any final comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against it? In the lobby, um, our chairman passes, I'll have, I'll work on those two other things as well too.
Yeah, I'll take those. Um, next is, I have a motion, please, for the MOU for BMS polling location.
Lori?
Second.
That, that? So this is the, the MOU between the district and the town to use BMS as the polling location, which they came to talk to us last, last month. Everyone have a chance to read it, any questions about it? Anything for Al?
Is that gonna affect our calendar then? Would we have to close down BMS?
In the future, take it into consideration.
Okay, it's not.
Like it could be a PD day, yeah, it could be a.
Yeah.
Seems very reasonable to me.
Alright.
And is just the gym gonna be affected, really, like in terms of scheduling?
Just the gym's gonna be affected, as far as scheduling goes, they'll make every attempt to schedule the school year around those dates that are known. Some won't be known. Um, those days will be like professional development days where the idea is that teachers may be in the building or they may be here in town, depends on when it's gonna be. Uh, so it shouldn't really be an impact, uh, and then, yes, the building will be locked off so that nobody can go through the doors there and get into the building. Handicap accessible, right, the doors are wide enough, they're, all of that will be safe for. And it's, it's how we're working with the town of Berlin, like they own the building anyways, right? But to be good community people as well. Alright, uh, all in favor of that one?
Aye.
Anyone against it? Alright, that motion passes. Next, please grab a motion to approve policy C H E district professional addresses.
So moved.
Lori?
Second.
Lisa? Sorry, Megan.
That's fine.
Uh, any questions on this one?
This just reflects the context in the BBEA contract signed in June of twenty twenty five.
Right. Alright, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Anyone against it? Okay, that motion passes, thank you. May I have a motion, please, for policy D L, school committee former members and graduating family members?
So moved.
Lori?
Second.
Megan? Any questions on this one, who was on first read last month?
I know Al brought this up, it just feels weird to vote on it, I don't know, it's like a self-serving policy, I don't know.
I have to tell you, I have gotten, I can't tell number of calls from superintendents and school committees to say, that's a really good thing, we're gonna go put that forward in our, our district as well too. The district that I was in previously did that, uh, I, I don't feel weird, I feel it's a really nice thing with during graduation, when you get to stand up for all of you guys, um, your children and be able to hand them their diploma as well too. It's, it's the least we can do for you guys as school members, you're not getting paid in the volunteer work and the hours you put in. I think it's just a really nice thing and, um, and again, I, I present that to you because I think it's just a nice thing.
Questions? Concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against?
No, abstain.
Jess abstains, okay. Uh, that motion passes. Uh, next is, uh, may I please have a motion to, uh, what is the correct here, to designate Beth Mancini as the alternate signatory for school warrants?
So moved.
Megan?
Second.
Lori? This one is, uh, request Al be one, Aaron be one.
Yeah, so we're just looking, Megan right now is our, our sign, Megan Grill, um, you know, we should have a, a backup, right? So that's our world that we live in, right, we should have a second person for every single thing we do, cross-training as well too. So if Megan, again, she'll be our first call, always there going through her, and we've talked about this. But if Megan can't make it, or, you know, like last year, her daughter went around and we couldn't, we still have bills every single time. So if she can't make it, then we need to have some backup for someone. So every job in this district, we should have a, a backup.
Yeah, I think our policy, I thought, said two, and I thought before we used to have, well, when I first started, we all had to sign the warrants at every meeting. They would bring the warrants and we'd have to look through them while the meeting was going on and then all sign them. So this was a huge thing, so I mean, you know, just voting this, we can decide maybe, like, the docu-sign goes to both of us because we can have two, and that way you have a second set of eyes on it, so I actually love this.
Yeah, we probably should have done a little kind of vote.
We absolutely should have.
This policy, D G A, our signatures, actually says that school committee shall vote, not that you could vote, but shall vote. Legally, that's, oh, wow.
We gotta have this, right, we gotta be like, people busy, we're just trying to make sure we do that.
We vote on the consent agenda, we all vote on it, but like, it's just, how do you have time for everyone? You're not gonna have time to look, so best I look at it. Yes, and that way if there's like questions on invoices, like both sets of eyes, like I might, you know, I ask about an electricity bill and I can go look at that invoice and be like, oh yeah, that's what this is, and if questions come up in the meeting, like, hey guys, I looked at that. So I think it's a great idea.
In, in signing off on payroll, let me just sneak in this little thing. Um, we had our first payroll of the year, right, successful, Piatti spent very good for her. Compared to last year at this time, when I was coming to you as a school committee saying, okay, here, here we got Payton, Mike. Uh, but first payroll went out, so Piatti did a, a great job on that, so we thank him for that, so, so it's not, that didn't even that same. It fits, it fits.
Uh, cool, any final comments on that?
Are you?
Did you wanna go on?
It's a whole, it's an eye pecker.
Docu-sign, so you do it at home, yeah.
Yeah, alright, cool.
Thanks, Beth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? That motion passes, yes, Beth, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't want to, I, I talked.
I'll talk to you after.
Can I have a motion, please, to accept, yeah, to approve by board?
So moved.
So Lori?
And, uh, well, let's put the motion on.
Second, second, second.
Lori, Megan, and Aaron's gonna.
Go ahead.
So the vote should be to authorize the director of finance and operations the authority to execute the agreement to join the by-ball board purchasing cooperative. So you have, uh, in your, uh, your packet, you have, um, a copy of the actual agreement. I think some key items to remember, it's a non-exclusive agreement. It doesn't prevent us from joining other agreements. There's absolutely no cost to us and we can sever this, this agreement on thirty days' notice. So there's really no, um, disincentive to, 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 to not join. Every now and then, we find a product like this, uh, the turf tank and the, the, this is the field lining, um, robot, um, where the vendor is a member of a purchasing cooperative, it helps us with the procurement process. It also helps with pricing, so this is a national purchasing cooperative out of Texas. Um, I've reviewed it, it meets, um, sort of the procurement requirements that we would fall under. So it gives us that liberty, um, to do. We are a member of M H E C, which is a more local cooperative. But every cooperative has a limit to the number of contracts they can have, the number of products. This is a state of Texas, they're huge, and they have, um, I can't see all of their contracts because I'm not a member yet. But, uh, you know, technology devices, so if we're purchasing Chromebooks and things like that, it might be something worth looking at to compare pricing, it would give us pricing to compare across, um, different products, cleaning supplies, paper, you name it.
Alright, before we get any further, uh.
Do we need an amendment?
Correct, I'm gonna correct my mistake there.
So.
Can I please have a, a?
No, we have to make an amended, yeah.
Yeah, can I please have an amended to the motion?
To replace.
To clean up the language, to replace the motion, that the school committee authorize the director of finance and operations the authority to execute the agreement to join the by-ball purchasing cooperative.
So moved.
Megan?
Second.
Jess, alright, sorry about that. Uh, any questions on the amendment? All is in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Anyone against? That is now the current motion on the table. Any questions for Aaron about this by?
So entering into this, are we approving that machine?
Uh, so we'll, we'll speak with, we'll, I'll work with Julie to, um, work on, uh, making a, a purchase or a lease of, of the field liner.
So the only thing I wanna, sorry, were you done?
I mean, I feel like there's gonna be more discussion on it.
So I guess this is my question, and so we give you guys a budget, right? The school committee says you have a maintenance budget of, let's, I'm just making up a number right now, I don't have to have it ten thousand dollars. You can do whatever you want with it. I'm assuming that you're gonna stay within the budget we've already given you and you're not asking for more money.
Yes, we're.
You're gonna figure out, alright, this is gonna save time on something else, so maybe it'll even save money. That's how I'm looking at this, um, without trying to like micromanage you or anything like that. That's how I read this, but I, at first it wasn't that clear, so I thought I would bring that up, just to make sure.
We need to do it within budget.
And potentially, uh, this could actually be a savings for the district over time because it would require less, um, man hours, so that the custodians or whoever is doing that is inside doing something else.
So in season right now, we have a custodian that pretty much spends every day, all day outside, in some way, she.
Yes, I, yeah.
So as we're looking at a field lining robot and a mower, that's gonna bring that person inside to do more work here, so it, it'll be a set it and forget it system, as we're talking about. The cleanliness of the buildings, having custodians presence, things like that. Um, that is an important provision in that.
But let's be clear though, it's not, we're not just doing this to, to purchase this one thing right here, right? So it's technology, it's all about, so I think there's still conversation going on about that field liner and all that, there was still conversations there.
Yeah. This is trying to cooperate. This happened to be the door opener into this, this purchasing agreement, that, that, whether we purchase this or not, it was, now we know this exists and there's an incentive to become a member. There's no cost, no reason not to, and we can do it. Um, I've entered other purchasing agreements before, national and otherwise, and not had to have school committee approval, like they, you know, that's part of the process, so I'm just following that process.
And, and just for clarity, I know Megan, you, like, we don't do whatever we want with the money, right? There's a whole process we go through, like, can we say, right, we have warrant, we, we do warrants, we've all purchased other requisitions, so it's all, you'll, you'll be updated and all.
I think we'd love to see like, not, like cost savings or our savings and.
Sure, okay.
What, you know, just why, that's a great idea, for the district.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against it? Alright, that motion passes. The next one is the BEC, we already did that. Uh, I'm gonna skip the next one, the school committee handbook, I heard from Lisa, there are maybe not, some things not ready to that yet, so.
We have to discuss before we can approve it.
In the interest of time, it's tabled, that one was the request. Uh, may I have a motion to accept the Berlin Insurance Group monitor donation?
So moved.
Lori? Lisa? Alright, any questions for Joe on that one?
There are two, two thousand and one along both of them.
Great. Thank you to both of them, that's very kind.
We will have Jen send out, thank you guys, we'll, we'll generate those to those two, those two people as well too for that, from the school committee.
Uh, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Alright, that motion passes. The last one is the DCR mass request. May I have a motion to, oh, before I make this motion, so this is, we put this on here, Megan, you sent this to us, Matt talked about it last time, this is about the parking lot.
We voted last time.
Right, this is about the parking lot. They want me to sign it as a chair.
That's an application for the DCR that's just gonna give us authorization to get.
It's not committing to us to make the parking lot for half a million dollars, right?
No.
It's just, let's keep the process rolling, let's keep talking about it.
Let's get approval from the DCR, so if down the road we want to get a parking lot, we can. So like in two years from, I don't know how long this thing lasts, that's another thing. We have no idea if you sign off on it now, is it gonna last for a year, is it gonna last for two years? I have no idea, but this is, again, nothing, something that costs us nothing to get this application in so that we can hopefully get an approval from the DCR to even be able to put a parking lot in.
Okay.
So that's my understanding of all this is.
Mine too, so that's why if it's here, just to double check across the Ts, the D O Ps, and have a motion to authorize the chair to sign the DCR Massachusetts request for watershed determination applicability, parking lot signature.
So moved.
Second.
I heard Megan and Beth. That's our first one. I heard Megan and Beth, I, any more questions or concern about that?
So it's not a current project, let's just continue with the applications, get DCR to cover stamp, it could be okay if you don't side it today.
Chelsea did the application for us, she donated her time and services, and the last step is to have the school district sign off so she can just send it to the DCR and the DCR will either yay or nay, yes, you guys are able to put a parking lot in or no, you're not able, you're not, like, you don't have to, it's just need that because of the watershed. Yep.
Thank you, Megan, I know you did a lot of work on that, so, thank you. Uh, alright, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Anyone against it? Okay, that motion passes, that takes care of all of our business items, we spoke about a few future agenda items. We've got a minute to get with shots, so we've got, need some motions to get into executive sessions. So we're gonna do three separate motions for this. May I please have a motion to enter executive session and we may return to open session if needed. Executive session pursuant to Massachusetts general laws, chapter 38, section 21A, purpose 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, B B R S D custodial staff teams whose local 170, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on a bargaining position of a public body and the chair, so declares.
Someone.
Lori? Lisa? All those in favor, roll call for Lisa.
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Jess?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Alright, so we're gonna enter an executive session for that topic. Before we do that, may I have a motion, please, to enter executive session for the Berlin Boylston Regional School Committee to convene an executive session on the purpose one, to discuss an open meeting law complaint filed by Lindsay McKinnon Tierney against the Berlin Boylston Regional School Committee.
Point of parliamentary inquiry. So we have the agenda item of upcoming meetings and future agenda items?